Calling this meeting back to order of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. And, let's see. Uh, this is not what I'm looking for. Alright. Alright, I'm calling this meeting back to order of the Sacramento City Unified School District. Uh, we do not have the superintendent right at this moment, but I will do the Pledge of Allegiance, item 4.1. If everyone could please stand. Salute. What?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm intruding in your space over here. I almost scooted on over. Okay. Student members, things, broadcast statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, a local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, March 20th at 2:00 PM and Monday, March 21st at 9:00 AM. It is also webcast at metro14live.sac county.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting and submit a speaker form will be sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask you please defer your comments until your item comes up.
Thank you. Alright, and we, item 4.3, student stellar. Um, we have a member Garcia that's gonna introduce our stellar student from Hiram Johnson High School, and we're sorry to keep you waiting. Member Garcia.
Uh, yes, thank you. So, tonight's stellar student is Nuneireen Sayturn, a sophomore from Hiram Johnson High School. Nuneireen is definitely an academic student. She volunteers at the food closet, has done art posters for school sports, is volunteering in the Front Street Animal Shelter event at Hiram Johnson on March 26th, and is involved in the early academic outreach program and college track. Her goal is to have an AA before she graduates from Johnson. She is very, she's a very quiet young woman, but don't let that fool you, she is fierce. And welcome, congratulations, Nuneireen.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Um, honestly, I'm speechless.
Aw.
Uh, this is extraordinary, to be honest. Um, I'm honored, thank you.
Very sweet, well, keep up the good work, we're proud of you.
Thank you, and I'll see you on the 26th.
Hold on one moment. Sorry, we're having a few technical difficulties this evening, well, alright. Um, item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Pritchett, there are five announcements coming out of closed session. The first, the board approved by a special, uh, a special, oh, I'm sorry, I take that back, or did not. The board adopted a resolution pursuant to Education Code, Section 44929.21, to non-reelect one probationary certificated employee and authorize the district superintendent or his designee to notify those employees of their non-relection by a vote of six to zero. Member Phillips was absent. Uh, the remaining announcements will be made by the superintendent.
Thank you. I'm really excited to announce that by a vote of six to zero with board member Phillips absent, the board approved the appointment of Ms. Samantha Trent as principal of Caleb Greenwood Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Trent. By a separate vote of six to zero with board members Philip, with board member Phillips absent, the board approved the appointment of Ms. Azarel Inigas as principal of Golden Empire Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Inigas. And finally, by a vote of six to zero with board member Phillips absent, the board approved the appointment of Mr. Brian Heap as Chief Communications Officer. Congratulations, Mr. Heap.
Right, thank you. Can I get agenda adoption? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Hold on one moment, technical difficulties, one moment. Let me turn on my camera here. Okay. Before we get to public comment, I have a quick statement on behalf of the board. Uh, the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education today issues the following statement. We are united in service to our students of this district and are committed to keeping our students in school. We are doing our best to serve honorably and make decisions that are in the best interest of all of our children's, all of our children and families, and do right by our staff. For many years, our district has struggled to balance our budget. This struggle goes back decades over past, over many past boards of education and superintendent. For too long, our district has committed to ongoing costs that are greater than ongoing revenues that our district receives from state and federal governments. We are proud that our board has, has, that we are proud that our board has taken fiscally sound steps towards correcting the longstanding structural imbalances in the district budget. Last year, we established board policies about using one-time funds responsibly, and we approved a policy that sets a goal to maintain a responsible reserve. The contracts our district negotiates with our labor partners must take these into consideration. We have a deep concern and compassion for our students in our district who will lose valuable time in the classroom if a strike takes place. Our families will suffer from the uncertainty and the lack of stability in the event that the, if schools are, if schools are forced to close due to a strike. The concern for our students is matched by concern for our teachers and our frontline staff who are caught in the middle of this situation. So many of them have told us that they simply want their labor leaders and the district to manage negotiations at the bargaining table so they can focus on teaching and learning. This is where we all want to be. Our community has been through a lot in the last three years. Students are behind, teachers and staff and families are burnt out. We need contracts that provide certainty in the short term and the long term that factors in the need for fair and late, fair and competitive total compensation for our staff, the ability to maintain reserve savings for economic uncertainties, and most importantly, the ability to invest in students directly to provide equitable opportunities for, to all students, especially those who have been marginalized by inequable educational systems for far too long. We ask that instead of striking, our labor partners go back to the bargaining table. We stand in support of our district community. Alright, with that, item 7.0, public comment. How many public comments do we have this evening?
We have 17 requesting public comment.
Okay, for our agenda, we have 15 minutes for public comment. We wanna make sure that we listen to, that we hear from each of our community members that are calling in, so I ask that you please keep your comments to one minute, and we will hear from each person. Is that the will of the board? Yes? Okay, thank you. Next, first public comment?
Our first speaker is Daniel Darby.
Good evening. Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can, go ahead, Mr. Darby.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's with disappointment that I hear that a strike is possible, not from one union, but from two unions. Uh, I would like this board to go back to the bargaining table, because it's my understanding that you walked away from the bargaining table in December with the teachers. I'm not sure about SEIU, but that's what I hear about from the teachers. I would like you to approach bargaining like you approached the bargaining with the superintendent, in that you give him, you give the people everything that they ask for, and then you hire a consultant at $500 to $1,000 a day, and have them find things to give in the contract, more, try to entice them even more. Then, once that's done, go to them and beg them to sign the contract. And you know what? You might get lucky, like Mr. Aguilar signed the contract.
Thank you, it's been one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Next speaker?
The next speaker is David Gonzalez.
Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez, you have, you have one minute.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, go right ahead, you have one minute.
Okay, let's see here, so you want labor partners to go back to the bargaining table and bargain in good faith? How about you go tell George to go at least one time to the bargaining table? You guys wanna problem solve? You need to make him go to the table, cuz this clearly isn't working. If leadership and problem solving came in the form of water, I'm not sure if anyone here could hit it, could, could hit it falling out of a boat, because problem, problem solving, urgent matters, is not a matter to you guys. Why else, why else does George never come to the bargaining table? Why else do you continue to send a bargaining team who's never prepared and unable to have meaningful discussions? I know you guys don't like to hear it, that's why you always take George's word on it, but the fact that he would tell you, the school board, news media, and community about bargaining, when he's never even there to begin with? I mean, you guys need to take responsibility in utilizing intellectual standards, seeking clarification.
Thank you, it's been one minute, thank you, please wrap it up.
Things are logical, do your job, we elected you to do your job and to look out for our community.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Ingrid Hutchins.
Good evening, Ms. Hutchins, go right ahead, you have one minute.
Actually, I have time donated tonight. I'm using time from Mary Ann Brown, Holly Conway, Alex, I'm sorry, Alan Cox, Janine Johnson, Shelley Lawson, Christina Ridenhour, and Jean Seto.
Two, three, four, seven, you have seven minutes, go right ahead.
Um, hold on one second, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, plus me would be eight.
Okay, go right ahead, Ms. Hutchins.
Thank you. First and foremost, before I start with what I prepared for tonight, just going on what you had just said, it was the district who walked away from the bargaining table, I'm at that bargaining table, okay? So these words always come from people who aren't in the room, and it needs to stop. They walked away from the bargaining table, they requested fact finding, and then when the fact finder didn't say things that they wanted them to say, they aren't going to agree with it. Okay, so stop the lies, please. It's really hard on the people who are actually working with the kids. Now, I hope you all remember when I spoke to you earlier this week at your board meeting, I begged you to start caring about the dire situation in our district. I begged you to care about your role in all of this mess. I begged you to demand the district to do better. I begged you to stop pretending that the families of today's students should be content with the fact that their children aren't receiving the full benefit of today's funding. I foolishly still had a lot of hope in you. After listening to your words just now, that came from earlier's, earlier press conference, I'm done begging and hoping, now I'm angry. However, I am not the only one. I just returned home from a rally in front of Surna Center, and my voice is hoarse from raising it so that it could be heard. Did you hear us? If not, I'll give you the Reader's Digest version. Thousands of certificated staff, classified staff, parents, students, and community members came together to send you a message. We're done watching you give away our students' funding to an overpaid superintendent, a CBO who sees, who sees nothing wrong in accepting a raise while she still sells you on the idea that we have a structural deficit. Outside attorneys who make millions of dollars from our budget, outside consultants who bleed us dry, and an outside negotiator whose favorite phrase is, "That's our proposal," instead of actually having discussions with us. You'd rather fund these people who don't work with the students you claim to care so much about while underfunding those who do. You give them power to drag out negotiations and chase away employees, and then have the audacity to blame the unions for bargaining issues. While I realize you all know what I'm about to say, I'm going to break some stuff down for the people who are listening tonight. I want them to understand how you allow people to take away money from our students. This board signed a contract that gives Aguilar significantly bigger raises on years when there is no agreement with SCTA. The board allows an outside negotiator who makes more money the longer this is dragged out to be in charge of bargaining, so she refuses to ever explain the district's rationale for proposals. She has zero reason to reach an agreement, so she only benefits when we don't. Then, outside attorneys step in to give the district advice that leaves them into lawsuits, and then they continue to get paid when the rep, when they represent the district in court. The same people who blame the unions, the ones who don't work with a single child, are stealing millions of dollars from our students. Aguilar has done absolutely nothing to deserve to make more than Governor Newsom. Unlike superintendents who have integrity and who are actually in this for the students, he does not go into schools to help with our staffing shortages. He doesn't care if they're filled or not, because he gets a fabulous paycheck regardless. He taught Spanish with an emergency credential in the 90s, so why hasn't he stepped in to help? Why hasn't he filed for a new credential from the state? We have students learning Spanish from Duolingo while he ignores their educational needs. He's not here for the students. If he was, he'd roll up his sleeves and help. I'm sure someone will argue that he can't get a new emergency credential because requirements are far more difficult now, so why hasn't he stepped in for any of the other vacant positions that directly serve students as superintendents across our country have? Because he's not here for the students. I'm beyond tired of hearing about the mythical structural deficit. It's disgusting that you pretend to buy into it and allow so many people to take money away from today's students. If you are really worried and ethical, you tell the district to cut Lasana Smith and just use in-house counsel that the district already employs. That would save you millions of dollars. You tell the district to cut their outside consultants, again, huge savings. You tell them that they don't need to employ an outside negotiator. The way she's been going, you could hire multiple new teachers without savings. You tell them to reduce administrators in Surna Center because what our district actually needs is staff on each of our school campuses. You would have been appalled when you were presented with a contract that allows Aguilar to make more money when he doesn't come to an agreement with SCTA. That's a huge red flag right there. You were elected to care enough about our, our district to steer the district in the right direction, but instead, you're running it into the ground. What you're doing to students in our district is shameful. Like I said, I'm done begging. You have decided to put the interests of Aguilar and his army of outside parasites before the educational rights of our students. This is not honorable. Now I'm angry, but I'm not alone. Thousands of district employees are angry. Hundreds and thousands of union members representing employees in a multitude of industries are angry. Most importantly, the families in our district are angry, and we're all standing together to tell you, enough is enough. How much time do I have left?
Two minutes and 37 seconds.
I would like to donate that for anybody who calls in who says that they need to get through something, you don't have enough time to give them, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Jody Bone.
Ms. Bones, go right ahead, you have one minute. She's what? Oh, Ms. Bones, you're on mute, if you could please unmute yourself? Is she on mute? Huh?
On mute.
She's still on mute? Okay, we, we can get back to Ms. Bones.
Our next speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Good evening, Terrence.
Good evening, and thank you, Ingrid, cuz I probably will need to use some of that time. Um, I was told not too long ago by a board member that there's a lot of things I don't understand, because so much happens, you know, in bargaining and in closed session. But I would ask or question, how can you guys tell me that I don't understand when you're getting your information from someone who's not in the room? I was told that it's not typical for a superintendent to sit in bargaining. I argue that whatever process we're following right now is not and has not worked. I get my information from students, parents, and teachers. And I know it's easy for you guys to hear a public comment from a labor union representative like David or Nikki, or previously Mo, and say, you know, that's just SEIU, or that's just SCTA. David and Nikki are both parents, and as, as is Mo. You know, and, and going back to Mr. Darby's statement, just using your own common sense, if you put aside the comments of David, Nikki, or Mo, or a specific labor partner, and you have a predominant amount of actual parents and teachers.
Thank you, it's been one minute, we're giving him additional time, go right ahead.
That are echoing what they say, and you're hearing your information from one source who's not included in the bargaining process, or is not even connected enough to school sites and, and, and students to remember more than one name of a school site he visited of supposedly multiple in a day, that erroneously calls a school site gentrified, that does not connect with families or students, I would ask you guys to question where you're getting your information, and I would argue that you guys don't understand what's actually happening. You know, the problem is that you guys have allowed our superintendent to build his glass tower so high above the clouds that he doesn't recognize what rain is. You guys are saying that you're building a reserve for a rainy day, when you have historical generational achievement gaps and failures. And yet, within his tenure, you guys have found a way to explain away everything as "Systems fail." It's okay, you know, we're doing the best we can. That's not the mindset of people that are geared to serve the needs of children today. Well, remember Murawski, before we returned to school, you said, "Build it and they will come." But we had thousands of students who did not come, and you guys failed to impose upon the superintendent and staff a meaningful, proper, legally adequate source of education. And you guys explained it away and said, you know, we just have staffing issues, they're national staffing issues, you know, we're experiencing everything that everyone else is experiencing across the nation, except we're, we're experiencing it so much worse because it's self-inflicted. We've lost so many administrators, teachers, who care about students and serve students for years, and voluntarily left this toxic waste land that we call a school district. You guys forget that the superintendent is also employee of the district. He reports to you guys, well, at least on paper. You know, you, you guys are rewarding him for, you know, what you guys call longevity, and I'll tell you guys a story that I told you before. My dad had a 77 fire birthday, he probably got in about 79. He left us sitting in the driveway claiming to fix it, you know, he was gonna fix it one day, he was gonna fix it one day. It sat there for over 20 years. Sitting there for 20 years, did not make that car run. Having a superintendent sit in a seat does not fix our district. I begged you guys, you guys claim to be data-driven, well, remember Pritchett just said, "We have a lot of teachers who are asking us to just have their leadership do a specific thing." Where's the data? How many? Give me a number, that's data. It's not a subjective statement or an opinionated statement.
Thank you, Terrence.
I just asked you guys to just do better, and it starts by looking in the mirror. I do that every morning before I go serve children and figure out what is the best way that I can be to make sure, and leading them by example.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Nikki Malewski.
Go ahead, Nikki, you have one minute.
And I may have some time seated to me.
I'm, I'm sorry, you have, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Ingrid Hutchins had seated some time, so I may go need some of that time.
Actually, she, she offered that time for anybody that wanted it, and I just gave it to Terrence.
Oh, you gave it to Terrence?
Yes, yes.
Alright, I will do my best to stay within my minute, starting now.
Yes, go ahead.
It is abundantly clear from the responses that board members have given to the public that this board has little understanding of what your lawyers and your consultants have actually proposed and what they're actually doing in your name. As you can see from the Fact Finders report on page 12 in the footnote, it refers to the video that we played for them of Jorge Aguilar explaining to you as a board in November, explaining to you what your proposal was for independent study, except it wasn't what your proposal was. It was different than what your team had proposed to our team. We played his footage to our team, our team said, "Hey, if that was the proposal, we'd agree to that." So we took your superintendent Jorge Aguilar's words, and we wrote them in our contract language, and we proposed them to your team. Your team rejected Jorge Aguilar's proposal. That is how out of touch Jorge Aguilar is, and this board is, from what's really going on at the bargaining table. And you wonder why we don't have an agreement?
Thank you, Ms. Malewski, if you could wrap it up.
Why bargaining is not progressing? Your side's communication is so broken. Your decision-making system is so broken.
Thank you, Nikki, if you could please wrap it up.
I know that you have all seen the Fact Finder report now because we sent it to you, not because your team shared it with you, the decision-makers. I expect you to read that report and understand and ask questions as to why your team rejected, including Jorge Aguilar's proposal for independent study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Sean Fettros.
Sean, go right ahead, you have one minute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, you have one minute, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm a sophomore at John Kennedy High School, and I have some very serious issues the way this district is being run. So you guys taking pay raises for yourself, or mostly Aguilar, while at the same time your kind of teachers pay, asking schools to cut one teacher in each department? This, this, this is not how schools should work. This being a neck of a business built to stockpile profits, but it's not. Your own, your main goal as the board of the district should be to educate students into better educational experiences, not just to stockpile money that we already have more, that we already have more than we ever need of. The people who need to run this district should be people who understand students' needs and want to improve their overall well-being, while keeping in mind the teachers and faculty who make this possible. The new contract you expect teachers to agree to is ridiculous. I mean, how could you ever expect anyone to agree with some of the terms you put in there? Would you yourself agree to those? I don't think so, and the teachers won't agree to it either. I must have fellow students stand with teachers on this, and we hope that you consider what I just said when it comes to negotiating with the two unions.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our final speaker is Taylor Kaata.
Go ahead, Taylor, you have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Taylor Kaata, I have two kids in the district, I am also running for board in Area 6 for Gerald Lu's seat. My response to the superintendent's response to the fact finding is that that response was appalling. When you only agree with your own points and you negate everything else, that is not negotiating. A staff shortage is relevant to the handling of distance learning and the COVID procedures. The pay of our staff is relevant if we have a shortage. To the board, it is on you to fix this, we elected you to fix this. We didn't vote for Superintendent Aguilar, we voted for you. If he's not doing what you told him, then make him fix it. If he is, then you need to look at what you're telling him to do and fix it. Additionally, I am the secretary of the Community Advisory Committee. When you did not attend our meeting on Tuesday, none of you attended with superintendent, and you didn't send any staff other than our usual super, our usual specialized staff, that was incredibly disrespectful to a community that saw cuts in our area and does not, to this day, have a response for what happened with that, why you did it, and if you understand the impact it'll have on our students. The people who need to run this district are people who understand students' needs and want to improve their overall well-being, while keeping in mind that teachers and faculty make this possible. The new contract you expect teachers to agree to is ridiculous. And how could you ever expect anyone to agree with some of the terms you put in there? Would you yourself agree to those? I don't think so, and the teachers won't agree to it either. I must have fellow students stand with teachers on this, and we hope that you consider what I just said when it comes to negotiating with the two unions.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our final speaker is Taylor Kaata.
Go ahead, Taylor. You have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Taylor Kaata. I have two kids in the district. I am also running for board in Area 6 for Gerald Lu's seat. My response to the superintendent's response to the fact-finding is that that response was appalling. When you only agree with your own points and you negate everything else, that is not negotiating. A staff shortage is relevant to the handling of distance learning and the COVID procedures. The pay of our staff is relevant if we have a shortage. To the board, it is on you to fix this. We elected you to fix this. We didn't vote for Superintendent Aguilar. We voted for you. If he's not doing what you told him, then make him fix it. If he is, then you need to look at what you're telling him to do and fix it. Additionally, I am the secretary of the Community Advisory Committee. When you did not attend our meeting on Tuesday, none of you attended with superintendent, and you didn't send any staff other than our usual specialized staff, that was incredibly disrespectful to a community that saw cuts in our area and does not, to this day, have a response for what happened with that, why you did it, and if you understand the impact it'll have on our students.
Thank you, Mr. Kaata.
Teachers to fill in general roles-
Thank you, Mr. Kaata. If you could please wrap it up.
Thank you. In closing, I would just like to say to anyone who agrees with me and supports my candidacy, kaata.com. Check me out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaata. Any additional speakers? I'm sorry? Oh, okay, go right ahead. Ms. Bones, is that who we're going to? Okay, Ms. Bones, go right ahead.
My time was scheduled for Ingrid Hutchins, and so it was in that group. I just didn't get mentioned, so thank you.
Thank you so much for letting us know. Perfect. Thank you. Any additional speakers? Nope. Okay, just a quick oversight. And this may just be an oversight on the first caller, but our superintendent's name is Jorge and not George. All right. Item 8.0, special presentation 8.1, resolution number 3259, recognition of Women's History Month. Or Martin... Do we have the resolution? Hold on one moment. All right. I got it. All right. Okay. I'll just read a few things from resolution number 3259. So in recognition of National Women's History Month, March 2022, whereas the advocacy efforts of the National Women's History Project led to the annual observance of Women's History Month, which highlights the contributions of women to events in history and contemporary society and is celebrated during March in the United States, the United Kingdom, and Austria. Australia, I apologize. Whereas women are particularly important and established in early charitable and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women have rejected violence as a counterproductive and stressed the need to restore the respect and establish justice and reduce the cause of conflict over the surest way to peace. Be it further resolved that the superintendent call upon the Sacramento City Unified School District families to join the UN Women's Call to step up for Gender Equality Planet 50/50 by 2030. I get a motion to approve resolution number 3259? Student preferential vote? I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that first. I apologize. Superintendent, roll call.
Member Villa?
Yay.
Member Murawski? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Wu?
All right, thank you. Item 8.2, update on mandatory COVID-19. Oh, we have public comment on this item?
We do. We have one public comment from Terrence Gladney.
Oh, I apologize, Terrence. Go right ahead.
It's all good. My roots of advocacy in education, you know, are based in PTA. So with this resolution on Women's History, you know, it's important to also acknowledge the contribution of Phoebe Hurst, Alice Burney, and Selena Sloan Butler, who are basically the mothers of the PTA. You know, when we're talking about advocacy, we're really talking about children who don't have the ability to stand up for themselves. Unfortunately, I don't, you know, continue to not see that voice uplifted in this space. So if we are really going to honor any of these resolutions that continue to come forward, you know, it really takes a reset other than just like a roll call vote. It really takes just like, you know, a coming of Jesus with us each individually to say, are we thinking of children first in the decisions that we make and the words that we speak? Are we honoring, you know, the ancestors on whose shoulders we stand on? And when I look at my Zoom screen, the majority of faces I see are those of women, including the young woman, student board member Zane. You know, you guys have tremendous shoes to fill. And I don't even know if you guys have even tried to step in them yet because you guys are just falling a little bit short. So I just hope that you guys step up to the legacy that you're supposed to be fulfilling because it's a tremendous one and it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Are there any additional public comment? No. Okay, thank you. Make sure and skip over. Okay, item 8.2, update on mandatory COVID-19 vaccine for eligible non-exempt students and staff. Mr. Lyons and Ms. Flores?
Good evening, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent and members of the board. I'm Victoria Flores. Serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And here with me tonight is Chief Information Officer Bob Lyons and Chief Human Resources Officer Consey McCarron. Next slide, please. Thank you so much. So as we shared in our last presentation, you know, the CDC has shifted to these community levels. We're really excited to share with you that last week on March 10th, Sacramento County did hit that low or green level, just as we had predicted and thought that, you know, the data was showing us that trend. So you can see over here on the right side of the screen, we actually lifted or listed the metrics where Sacramento County was sitting on the 10th. And I'm also happy to share that today we continue to be in that low rating. They just haven't updated their metrics yet. So you can see our new COVID hospital admissions are at 8.3. So we're well under that 10 mark. Our COVID inpatient bed utilization is at 7.4, again, under that 10% marker. And our new COVID cases per 100,000 are at 85.89, well under that 200 case mark. So we're really excited to see that. Here in Sacramento County, our new case rate is 5.2. And you can remember, we were way above that, you know, earlier, and our positivity rate continues to drop pretty significantly as well. And just for comparison's sake, this actually puts us back to where we were around June when we all thought we were going to have maybe a COVID-free summer. So very hopeful. Next slide, please. So as we look at our, you know, this is a county-wide snapshot. Now we look at our Sac City Unified testing and case data, and so we gave you a little bit of a different view this week. So this is the week of March 7th to the 13th. You can see we're still consistently providing a really high number of COVID tests. You know, we said we'd hit around that 20,000 mark, and we are staying there. Our number of positive tests for staff and students last week was 45. So we've dropped pretty significantly, about a 30% drop from the week previous. And then the number of positive cases that are reported to us, if some individuals do go get testing elsewhere, also about a 50% drop from the week previous. So we're seeing this continuation of this really nice, you know, drop off and decline of this Omicron wave. Next slide, please. So this leads us to our masking approach that we decided at the last board meeting. And what we had said is when Sacramento County falls to that low community level where we're sitting right now per the CDC and remains there for four consecutive weeks. So we've met one week, week one of that, then SUSD will align with that CDPH guidance to shift to a strong recommendation for masking. Until that, you know, requirement is met, masks remain in effect for all our staff, students, and visitors. And just, you know, a huge shout out to our community for continuing to mask, you know, pretty seamlessly. You know, I really just appreciate all of the school staff who have reinforced masking, everyone who helps, you know, get those masks out to, you know, our school sites and provide those opportunities. We did also say that a return to the high community transmission or that orange, you know, level per CDC would trigger a required return to indoor masking. So we're always keeping our eye on those changing conditions. And of course, we would, you know, consider resuming masking if we hit medium or, you know, we're looking at any other global, national, or local trends. And of course, if there's any kind of, you know, state public health order or local public health order. We do just want to share, you know, with our community, many of us are tracking this in the media, that there are a couple of variants that are impacting, you know, Asia, parts of Europe. And we do see this here in the United States as well, particularly on the East Coast. It's an Omicron variant BA dot 2, commonly called the stealth variant. There's also another one called Delta Cron. It is a thing. And these are labels that the media has given. And we do see that they are kind of creating somewhat of an uptick. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. But we are very hopeful with our high, you know, getting their high vaccine rates or continuing continued testing that we can, you know, keep this wave a lot lower and maybe just extend it out. But did just want to share that, not to startle anyone or concern anyone, but to let our community know that we are carefully, you know, watching those trends, tracking them, and consulting with local public health experts. We cannot predict the future. That's one thing that COVID has taught all of us, right? But especially here. But I just want to say we will continue to do everything in our power to be prepared and as ready as possible. Next slide, please. And here's our timeline. We put together a visual so, you know, folks could kind of see where this is taking us. So on March 10th, we hit that green metric per CDC, and we hit it again today on the 17th. So we've completed week one. We'll look again to March 24th would be week two, the 31st, week three. April 7th would be that fourth week, but right before we go on spring break. So if that pattern holds, then we would be shifting to, you know, that strongly recommended masking policy. I will say you'll likely see lots of strong messaging from us that if you gathered with individuals, attended a large event, or traveled, we would really, you know, recommend that you mask for 10 days. Our COVID testing center at Cerna, where y'all are sitting, will be open throughout spring break. We invite all of our, you know, employees, staff, students, and household members to come get tested, whatever reason they have. And we will also be sending those at-home COVID testing kits before spring break so that we can return from spring break, you know, as safely as possible. Next slide, please. We also wanted to share that after our last board presentation, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the AAP, did come out with some great masking recommendations and statements. And they, again, just reiterated what we were really hearing from other local public health experts and really what we discussed with the board, that families can make these decisions based on if their child is vaccinated or not, if they have an immunocompromised, you know, position or a high severe risk of COVID. If anyone in their family or someone they spend significant time with or in their household also has, you know, high risk or is unvaccinated, maybe they're under five, right? Or have, you know, other reasons for not being vaccinated. And the community that you live in with a high level of COVID, we know that's not Sacramento County right now. We're going to continue to do everything we can to keep those rates low. And that those are really the considerations that families can make and that we, as a school system and a community, should support families' choices, no matter what that is, to mask or to not mask. They also call out that schools should have the flexibility to reinstate masking as needed. And we really appreciated, you know, seeing that strong statement as well because that really leans into, you know, part of our discussion with the board as well. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Information Officer Lyons.
Thank you, Victoria. This slide displays the testing consent progress for all students. Whoops, wrong slide here. This slide displays the increase in student vaccination rates for the 12 and older age group over the past six and a half weeks. Student vaccination rates have increased about 1.3% since the last board meeting, representing about 500 additional student vaccinations. This rate is about 2% lower than the Sacramento County rate, as Victoria just discussed on here. For the 12, this graph is also for the 12 to 19 age group. So it's, we're about 2% lower than the Sacramento County rate. As the graph indicates, we're still making progress, albeit rather slowly in recent weeks. Our student, 5 to 11 age group vaccination rate is right now about 31%, about 7% lower than the 38% rate for the same Sacramento County age group. Overall, about 46% of our students are vaccinated and about 3% have filed for an exemption. Next slide, please. This slide displays the testing consent progress for all students over the past six and a half weeks. At this point, about 57% of our student population, 5 and older, are required to test. Since the last board meeting, about 406 additional students have consented the test. Our latest update, as indicated in the March 17th graph, is displaying 2,048 students that have not yet returned their consent to test form. This represents about 9.5% of the students that have required the test. These numbers do not include Capital City students since they're on independent study. At this point, about 57% of our student population ages 5 and older are required to test. Next slide, please. Next up is Chief McCarron, our Chief Human Resources Officer.
Thanks, Bob. Hello, board members. We want to share with you a little bit about our staff vaccination. And our staff has been doing a really great job, as you can see, meeting the vaccination requirement or going through the exemption process. I do want to share that we will continue to work, of course, trying to get every single person in that place where they are either fully vaccinated or have an exemption on file, an approved exemption on file. We do have a bit of a lag time between the information in our system to our compliance database. So sometimes, depending on when you look, it might look a little different. Do want to just point that out. We have a number of staff still going through the exemption process, so partially complete with that, needing just one more piece of documentation and information. And so we definitely appreciate that. The other group that we're still working with that you don't see on here are our substitutes in trying to ensure that those that are remaining are able to provide the information that they need. So we're still doing that outreach, trying to just make sure we are all the way to 100% for all employees across the system who are in the supporting school sites and departments. And with that, just the next slide and we'll wrap up.
All right, thank you so much. So as we wrap up our next steps, we will continue to monitor case rates globally, nationally, locally, including our school-based surveillance testing case rates that we continue to report out to you. We will update our community on the potential shift in masking policy. We are continuing to target outreach efforts to those 2,048 students not yet vaccinated or registered for testing. So we just don't know their status, and we continue to ask students as they come through surveillance testing, "Are you vaccinated?" And we do get some of those records. Of course, we are working on updating our families on their students' vaccination or testing status, and we'll be doing that electronically, you know, letting them know, "Hey, thank you. We have your student's record." Or, "Thank you for registering for testing. By the way, is your student vaccinated?" Right? Share those records with us. And then, of course, we're going to maintain the integrity of our onboarding process for newly hired staff to ensure that they can be compliant with our vaccine or exemption requirement prior to them starting with us. So that'll be a really great, you know, way to keep them safe and get them on board. So those are our next steps, and with that, I will close out our presentation.
Great. I believe we have public comment? 10 public comments? Public comment? Okay.
Okay, the first public commenter is Catherine Bullos.
Go ahead, Catherine. No, Catherine's not online. Okay.
Our next public commenter is Daniel Darby.
Mr. Darby, go right ahead. Yes, we... Hello, Mr. Darby?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay, hello. Let's see. I appreciate the presentation. I do have one question on the data of the new COVID-19 hospital admissions per 100,000. We're using CDC metrics. Doesn't Sac County Public Health Department also have that same metric? But their numbers don't match the CDC metric, I believe. I'm a little bit wondering why we're using CDC metric rather than Sac County, because Sac County is more local. Sac County is more local. I'm sure that they report to CDC somehow, but I'm just curious as to why we're using the CDC metric. That's one question I have. Second question I have is on the staffing. Has anybody had to be put on unpaid leave or did we have to say goodbye to because of their non-compliance? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Jean Shanley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Thanks. I'm speaking for myself and I have donated time from Marie Perez, Marissa Morashita, Jill Kupelian, Sandra Halsted, Catherine Bullos, Jessica Boatman, Melissa Dowd, and I think his name is Mr. Walt Rupp.
Okay, so that's nine. So you have 18 minutes.
Okay, thanks. I don't think I'll take all that time, but my internet does cut out now and then. So I would just like to be able to continue if that happens, if I come back on. So I just wanted to start off by making a few comments on the presentation. I found it to be really impactful that 20,000 tests were performed and only 45 positives. I mean, I was wondering if you could communicate to the community just how little benefit is being achieved through this massive testing effort. I know that at my child's own school, there's a massive level of paranoia and a level of testing that does not seem necessary, given the risks in the community and given what, what you're actually demonstrating with your testing data. So if we could do something to help bring down all the fear and paranoia levels in the community, I think that that would be really helpful because there's, there's a lot of really traumatized kids out there. I also was wondering what the level of natural immunity is in the community. Nationally, they're reporting that they feel upwards of 70 to 80% of children in this country have natural immunity. To the extent your case levels are coming down, it's very possibly due to the fact that most of the kids have actually had COVID already. It clearly doesn't have anything to do with the vaccines because the more it mutates in these new variants that Victoria seemed worried about in her presentation. And she's, she's very confident that everything's going to be fine as long as we get everybody vaccinated. The vaccines are very clearly being established to not really do much at all with regard to these variants. It's likely the natural immunity levels and Victoria and your staff is doing nothing to track that. So that would be helpful if you were able to provide data on that. Next point I had. I have, I want to reiterate that the vaccine and the testing mandates are illegal. We've talked about this before. There is no provision in the law for you to be mandating these. That's why CDPH doesn't mandate them. The governor and the state is not mandating it because there's no legal authority. You know about the LAUSD case where LAUSD had to pull their mandates because they were failing in the court and they didn't want a big black eye. So they just pulled the whole thing and delayed it until next fall. Same thing at Piedmont. They got a bad ruling against them and they didn't want the case to proceed, so they just pulled it. The only reason I think you're pushing forward is because no one's yanked you and pulled you into court, but it doesn't mean there's anything legal about your vaccine or testing mandates. They're not. They're illegal. Moreover, they're really unnecessary. Three things that we are all learning right now that the experts are telling us is, one, COVID is not going away. Two, the vaccines don't work. And three, the cloth masks don't work. And the other masks, surgical masks are not effective either and N95s are not even recommended for children. So what are we going to do? What, what's a long-term strategy and plan that is reasonable? The one thing that is coming back to the table in various scenario situations and venues is improved ventilation. Ventilation is really effective. That's why they are saying that, the experts are saying transmission of COVID on airplanes is actually less than other indoor venues. Everybody's paranoid about getting on the airplane, but it's actually safer on the airplane because of their high HEPA filtration systems that they have. So I'm wondering what SCUSD has done to assess the ventilation quality at the schools and upgrade it because this is really the only long-term meaningful expenditure at this time that's going to improve things. As this virus mutates, the already temporary vaccines are not working. In fact, today, I would submit that, that Victoria's report's not even accurate, or it was maybe Bob's report about how many children are vaccinated. They're not vaccinated because they have expired vaccines. Even kids that got boosted back in January, those boosters don't last more than a couple months. So for all intents and purposes, pretty much everybody in your community is unvaccinated again. The only ones who have immunity are the ones who've had COVID. And that brings us back to that natural immunity metric. And that's just going to continue the more and more the virus mutates in the future. So I encourage the board to take a hard look at that and not assume that case rates are going down because everyone's getting vaccinated. Not likely. The vaccines, I mean, there was a study that was done that showed in age group five to 11, the vaccination effectiveness in Omicron, against Omicron was like 12%. So the vaccines are not improving it. Masks are also not, not endorsed. Dr. Scott Gottlieb is the former FDA chair. He stated in January on a Face the Nation interview that got a lot of attention online that cloth masks that the kids are wearing are relatively ineffective against the airborne virus. So this is our strategy that we're presenting to these parents. You just keep masking and keep vaccinating and we'll just pull all those tools back out again when there's a surge. And the only thing that really long-term will just help keep, keep infection levels and transmission down is improved ventilation. That's just science. I also just want to say that I was really concerned about the comparison that Victoria made to the mask, like the pulling the mask out whenever, whenever, you know, seasonal and, you know, winter hits and fall hits and, you know, infection rates will go up because they will. And it's not going to be the Delta Cron or whatever. It's going to be new variants in the fall. It's going to be just like flu. We have to learn how to roll out some sort of strategy that assumes circulating COVID because that's what we're going to have. So ventilation, ventilation, ventilation. And Victoria said, well, we'll just pull the masks out. It'll be like a warm jacket. Masks are not like a warm jacket. I take serious objection to that. There is absolutely no public health mandate that children wear warm jackets. That's a decision that's made by families, made by individual students, but when they want to put their jacket on. When we're talking about mandating that people cover their mouths and not permit them to breathe, there's, that's not compared to a warm jacket. And also, there's no downsides to putting on a warm jacket, except maybe if it's too warm out, the child might sweat. But there's no public health warnings about wearing a warm jacket. There are public health warnings about these masks. In the World Health Organization's June 2020 guidance regarding mask wearing and universal mask wearing, they specifically list numerous downsides to universal masking in the public because that's a new thing. Masking has always been limited to contagion environments like hospitals, never has been rolled out universally across the whole public. And they list the downsides. One, self-contamination from handling the mask. Two, self-contamination from wet or soiled masks. Three, headaches, breathing difficulties from oxygen deprivation. This is in the WHO guidance from June 2020 and never have they revoked that. Four, it inhibits communication, pretty important in schools. Five, discomfort for hours on end when these children are sitting in school. Six, I love this one. It's my favorite. False sense of security, leading to lower adherence to other protections. Like if you've got a vulnerable person in the community and they think it's okay for them to come out because everyone's got masks on, that vulnerable person is delusional. If they are vulnerable, truly vulnerable, these masks do nothing. It gives them a false sense of security. WHO guidance, 2020, June. Seven, poor compliance, particularly by younger children. Eight, skin lesions, dermatitis, worsening acne when used frequently or for long hours like in school. Nine, waste management issues. The disposable masks and cloth masks are littered all over town. Ten, difficulty wearing them by children, particularly in hot and humid environments. And we have a hot and humid climate here in California. There is no question that there are downsides to masks and they are never discussed. So what are we going to do? Pull the masks out that don't work, that restrict the children's ability to, to live their lives in school and learn? Vaccines that are expiring and cannot keep up with the variants mutations? This is not a long-term strategy. What is a long-term strategy? Stay home when you're sick, monitor yourself for symptoms and ventilation, ventilation, ventilation and hand hygiene, other things like that. This, the Vax program, it may not even be around in two years because of the failure. Regarding testing, I have one more point to make about the testing. Your testing program is clearly discriminatory. There's no reason why only unvaccinated children should be testing. I would like Victoria's reports and Bob's reports to be updated to clarify the number from the beginning of the year, from the time your test, at the inception of your testing program, I'd like to see the levels of vaccinated versus unvaccinated children. Because I know in my, from personal accounts and anecdotes in my kid's own class, most of the kids who got infected with COVID were all vaccinated. I have a report from another parent in our group. Her child went to a party around Christmas time. All the kids were vaccinated. They all got sick. Nobody was protected from their vaccination. Nobody. So this notion that all we need to do is test the unvaccinated, I'd really like to see some, some metrics and justification from your own data based on that because your data never looks at the comparison of vaccinated versus unvaccinated and your case rates because there's tons of vaccinated people who are getting sick, including in the school. So there's no reason to single out a vaccinated person. And also I've seen, I don't see anything in their vaccine, you're testing a registration program regarding natural immunity, once again. So I'd like to see that change made as well. And that's it. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional speakers? Two additional speakers? Okay.
Our next speaker is Marissa Morashita.
Marissa, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
I donated my time to, oh, okay. Perfect. I donated my time to Jean Shanley.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
The final speaker is Taylor Kayata.
Go ahead, Taylor.
I thank you. And actually, Shonda Wesley had requested time also. But for my, thank you. So for my comment, I would just like to say thank you to everyone here. Thank you very much. I know that the decision you made to keep this mask mandate in effect was courageous. This is something that you, I'm sure, are taking a lot of flak for and was not an easy decision. So thank you so much for hearing us. It is really important that we stay strong and keep with this. I will say, I was actually a little worried when I saw this come on the agenda. I was worried you were going to walk away from it. I'm glad to see that we're still on target to stay safe and we're staying with our prudent choice to protect our kids. This is especially important now that we continue to have problems with our independent study program, that kids who are on the border are feeling unsafe, can stay in their classrooms. Again, just thank you very much and keep on doing a good work with this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
We have one additional speaker requesting to speak.
Okay.
And that's Tracy Mistry.
Tracy, go ahead.
Hey there, it's actually Shonda Wesley.
Oh, hi, Shonda. Go ahead.
On behalf of the 650 families who signed the supportive max, mask mandate petition, I just wanted to thank Victoria and Bob for their presentation. And I'm glad to see that the district is sticking with masking until at least April 18th. I'd like to ask the board members, though, to comment on what the trigger will be to return to masks once the new variants hit us. I appreciated Victoria's awareness of the variants picking up. There is already evidence of an uptick in Palo Alto. I don't want to remove my child from the classroom once again, especially with a waiting list for independent study being their only option. What happens with a post-spring break spike? Do we go straight back to masks the following week? So I'm asking you, what is the board's plan for safety for our kids when we start to spike? What are your metrics that you're deciding to follow? Parents have been told by the district on independent study that they can walk and chew gum at the same time. Last time we heard that, let's just be gracious and say that we saw some difficulties. So this time, we would love to see something specific on paper about the plan about when we will re-mask our kids. Thanks so much.
Thank you. That's it? Okay, I'll open this up for board comment. I just wanted to thank Victoria for continuing to follow the science. Do you have any board comments? Member Garcia?
Yes, I did have a question similar to one of the speakers. Now that you're seeing the stealth Omicron and the Delta Cron, you know, rising, I'm just wondering, can you remind us of what that metric is that you're, you're going to be monitoring for in order to decide whether the masks stay on? I think if I recall correctly, it was like 50 per 100,000, but I can't remember if that was the lift or I just can't remember. So maybe you can just remind us what that is.
Sure, yeah. When we hit that 50, you know, new cases, that's when we actually returned back to extracurricular activities. We lifted the outdoor masking mandate. You know, the clear metric that we agreed upon in this, you know, masking decision was if we hit that high, for sure, we will go back or if there is a California state public health order or a local public health order. What we did say, and I can understand people wanting maybe some more specificity, is if we start to hit medium or we see local trends, that we would, you know, come back to the board, I believe, is, is what, you know, superintendent had indicated, to have that discussion and, and give another recommendation. We could, you know, we can definitely look at, you know, getting into further specifics if that's something the board requests.
So there are multiple points that you're looking for. And I guess on the, on the more conservative side is it's if we are at least at the medium, then that's when you're going to revisit the recommendation on how we proceed with the masking.
Correct. And those metrics, you know, we've shifted to those CDC metrics. We don't have a local state, you know, kind of classification or metric or a local county, but that data does get pulled from our local, you know, county data to the CDC. So the CDC is the one that, you know, listed those new county levels and, and that is what our county and our state are really looking to. And so that is why we chose those metrics. It does include case rates, so that's something we're constantly looking at as well as the impact to our hospitals.
And then just lastly, going to continue to monitor this for the next few weeks. In the event that we had to keep our masks on coming back from spring break, then it would be notifying our families that kids need to show up with masks. If they don't, then there's always masks at school, right? And just asking them that due to the case rates, we're going to continue the masking. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
I see you nodding. That's why, okay, thank you.
Member Moroski?
Thank you. Thanks again for the presentation. I just wanted to give Victoria, you an opportunity, if there is anything that you wanted to reemphasize in terms of, you know, I heard some things about effectiveness of vaccines, effectiveness of masks, and just really want to make sure we're all clear on, you know, whether natural immunity is, is better than vaccines. It's not. So I just wanted to give you a chance to make sure we can emphasize any, any factual information that's important. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say, you know, we really encourage people to consult with their health provider on any questions around vaccination. And we do know that there was some data that came out that I think concerned particularly parents in that four or five to 11-year-old range about, you know, the, the rates of contracting COVID. But there was one really important point in that research that was done that I think as, as, you know, parents and caretakers of children, we can't walk past, which is they, they were very effective at preventing hospitalization and severe effective at preventing hospitalization and severe illness. And, you know, vaccines are not cures, right? But they are protective. And so that is one. And then we also saw some, you know, really strong research out of the CDC published widely around the effectiveness of masking in schools and how much significantly lower transmission occurred in schools that did have masking policies. We do know that that has been, you know, an incredibly helpful tool for us, particularly before we had wide access to vaccine. We have maximized all of our ventilation and, you know, continue to use all of those layered mitigation measures that many individuals have mentioned. And so it's this broad array of these measures that put together, really, you know, create a safer possible environment as we can during the middle of a pandemic. So thank you for that.
Thanks so much.
All right, any other board comment? Superintendent?
President Fitchett, I just want to thank our community. As I contacted principals and visited schools, really, you saw very little difference between what we had been seeing in masking prior to the statewide, the state lifting of masking mandate and what we're still seeing in schools right now. And that really is just a nod to the continued interest in making sure schools and our students are safe today. I just want to really just thank our community for understanding that this is an approach that we have taken to mitigate the threat of COVID, and we will continue to keep our community updated and informed as things might change.
So, again, I just want to thank our community for their support as we've tried our best to navigate very complex and very difficult issues. Thank you again.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right. Thank you again for this presentation, and thank you once again for always following the science and bringing us the facts. So, all right, this is an information item, so I will move on. Item 8.3, second interim budget report and FICMAT update. Two from us?
Yes, thank you, President Fitchett, board members, and superintendent members of the public. If we could please start the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you. Tonight, we're presenting the 2122 second interim budget report. Next slide, please. The agenda for this evening is going over briefly the district's financial reporting requirements and our status, the budget changes since the first interim, multi-year projections, and budget calendar. Then we'll share with you the update on the FICMAT matrix and conclude with a summary and then request for approval of the second interim. Next slide, please. And we've seen this slide before. These are the reporting requirements as dictated by Ed Code that state that we are required to present and to prepare and present our two financial reports throughout the year. And we are, and based on our projections and how we certify, we may be required to present a third report, which is due by April 30th. Next slide, please. The district's fiscal status. And just a reminder that the district's 2122 adopted budget was conditionally approved by SCOE and primarily due to the ongoing structural deficit, and we were issued a letter of going concern. We do have a fiscal recovery plan in place that the board approved, updated one on December 16, that was able to save the district $5,001,000 in one-time expenses and $240,000 in ongoing. For the 2122 second interim report, we are certifying or submitting this report as a qualified, and these are some of the reasons why the district is still projecting a deficit in '23, '24 of about $6 million. We are seeing a pretty steep enrollment decline. As we've shared in the past, in the prior year, we saw a decline of about 1,600 students. We're projecting another 1,500 for the coming year. Our negotiations are unsettled for our bargaining groups. And this budget, this updated budget is based on the proposed state budget that was shared by the governor in January, and we know that that's not yet an enacted and 100% budget. So that's another reason. And we're still in need of a fiscal recovery plan to achieve a balanced budget and eliminate that deficit completely. So based on this information, the Sacramento County Office of Education's fiscal advisor will remain assigned, and we will remain under stay and rescind authority. Next slide, please. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Accounting Services, Jesse Bastio, and he will take you through some of the information in the second interim report.
Thank you, Rose. Chairman President Fitchett, members of the board, Superintendent Aguirre. Before I dive into the summary of changes, I just wanted to note, there's quite a bit of detail on this slide as well as the slides following, so it's going to go through at a higher level. But of course, we're happy to answer any questions on the detail at the end of the presentation as well. So with that, this slide is the 2122 second interim report. As you can see, the changes in unrestricted and restricted revenues, as well as changes in unrestricted and restricted expenditures and changes in contributions. Next slide, please. This slide further highlights the summary of changes as of the second interim report of note per Board Policy 3100. An additional 3% has been set assigned for the reserve for economic uncertainty, putting the total at 5%. And we also do still see the unrestricted deficit spending improve, but not eliminated in '23, '24 with a $6.2 million projected deficit. And as Rose mentioned, still leaving that need to achieve a plan, to achieve a balanced budget. Next slide, please. This slide further compares the second interim financial report compared to the first interim. As you can see in that first table, it's the second interim report with the ending fund balance of $130.1 million compared to the first interim budget in the second table at $123.5 million. So total net improvement in the ending fund balance of approximately $6.6 million. Next slide, please. Now, this goes a little further into the revenue and expenditure categories and the adjustments made within each of those, and how those have an impact on the ending fund balance. Again, a $6.6 million net change in ending fund balance from first interim to the second interim, and this represents a 0.93 or less than 1% change in the overall budget since the first interim report. Next slide, please. This describes the changes within the second interim report compared to the first interim. This has the unrestricted and restricted revenue adjustments of note on the restricted side, and we see a $2.2 million addition for carryover for CSI funds, as well as $900,000 to carryover for Title V programs, as well as one-time funding added for the new special education learning recovery program of $3.67 million. Next slide, please. This highlights the current year expenditure changes in our unrestricted and restricted categories with the description in the middle column and the net adjustments in that rightmost column of note on the restricted side, adjustments corresponding to those additional revenues identified and described in the previous slide as well. Next slide, please. This highlights the multi-year projections, revenue assumptions, with the top two tables representing the unrestricted revenue projections and the bottom two representing the restricted revenue projections for the two out years. Of note, looking at our unrestricted revenue, we do see a change in the LCFA funding methodology. Under current law, the districts are funded off of either the higher of the current year or the prior year ADA, but the governor's budget proposal does provide for a third option, which is the three-year average, prior year average ADA, and this methodology is the one used to calculate the multi-year projections within the second interim. And a little later on in the presentation, Rose will share the impact of that methodology versus current law as well. This slide takes a look at the unrestricted multi-year projection assumptions on our expenditure projections. As you can see, this also does include increases for step and column, for STIRS and PERS, as well as increases for health costs and benefit plans. Next slide, please. This takes a look at the restricted expenditure projections for '22, '23, and '23, '24. Again, does include step and column increases, STIRS and PERS costs, as well as health benefit costs. In addition, it does include adjustments for special education costs and other adjustment pursuant to restricted programs, and one-time dollars being removed from the out years as well related to COVID, as well as other grant programs. Next slide, please. This is at a high level, the general fund multi-year projections, and shows how those two prior slides flow into the multi-year projections. As you can see, as we move throughout the years, looking at '23, '24, unrestricted, excuse me, unrestricted ending fund balance of, excuse me, combined ending fund balance of $134.4 million and the deficit spend amount of $6.2 million. Next slide, please. This slide is the multi-year projections, but without the one-time COVID or CARES dollars included. As you can see, it drops both the revenue and expenditures pulling that one-time funding out, and it also does have a net difference due to indirect costs that are no longer charged and due to the removal of those one-time COVID funds. Next slide, please. This slide is a look at the multi-year capital projections. As you can see, each of the three fiscal years, very healthy cash flow balances and still continuing to meet our cash flow obligations. Of course, we're still continuing to monitor to make sure we stay with healthy cash flow balances and are able to meet those obligations as well. Next slide, please. The General Finance Officers Association recommends a reserve of 17% or approximately two months' average payroll, which for our district is $82 million as of the second interim report. Next slide, please. This slide is a highlight of the budget calendar and timeline. Here we are in March 2022 with the second interim report, with our next reporting period being the third interim report in May 2022, followed by the budget in June 2022. And with that, I'd like to pass it back to my colleague, Rose Ronalds. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Next slide, please. You've seen this slide before. This is just a very high-level overview of where we're at with the FICMAT findings that, based on the analysis that was prepared back in October 2018, there were 60 deficiencies identified, and each of these reporting periods just provide a summary of how we've addressed them or what kinds of progress we've made. In this last period, we have addressed five additional findings, and this is mostly related to the improvement in the budget, specifically those that we were able to demonstrate that we have sufficient cash for all three years. That was one of the major findings in the original FICMAT report, that the district was at risk of running out of cash and would need an emergency loan. We also addressed deficit spending in terms of being able to show that the deficit has been at least addressed in a couple of years, but not necessarily all eliminated, and that the district has the ability to satisfy its minimum reserve in all three years. Again, when this analysis was prepared, the district was not able to meet its minimum reserve in all three years. And the other was the unrestricted fund balance, being able to show that it's stable or increasing, and that is the case as a second interim. So we are able to, we were able to complete five of those findings. Next slide, please. We are almost at the tail end of the presentation. Just a couple of risks. Of course, we always want to make sure that we provide you with as much information as possible. We've mentioned that there is a significant decline in our enrollment, and so should that trend continue, we would, of course, update our multi-year projections. We are budgeting for an additional 1,500 loss of students for our next fiscal year based on our decision inside analysis and some internal information that we have as well. However, for the following years, we are going back to our trend of about a half a percent decline, and so we'll just have to keep an eye on that, and, you know, if that reverses, then certainly we'll let you know. The other is uncertainty regarding the state budget. Again, this is based on the governor's January proposal, which afforded the 5.3% COLA plus that third ADA that Jesse talked about. And I just wanted to show you the impact of the three-year ADA averaging versus current law. For the district, this represents an additional $25.5 million in the second year, an additional $12.3 million in the third year. So really important, in the event, you know, that that does not materialize, well, of course, we will have to update our projections to reflect that, whatever it is that ends up being the state's actual budget once that budget is enacted. And what we've also done for you and for the public is that we have prepared a fourth year just to show you and illustrate the impact of not having a balanced budget where our revenues equal our expenses on an ongoing basis. What ends up happening is that, of course, our expenses do increase because of the cost of step and column and health and welfare benefits and our pension costs, and yet, based on the information we have at this time, the COLA that we are projecting to get for that out year is not sufficient to cover, to keep pace with the increase in expenses. So therefore, that deficit is projected to increase to $19.7 million. Now, the benefit that the district is, has right now is that it has sufficient ending fund balance to be able to support that shortfall. But as you see, what ends up happening is, of course, it starts to deplete. I mean, granted, we do have over, you know, projecting to still have over $100 million in that ending fund balance, which is quite substantial, but it will deplete. And I just wanted to pause here for just a second and just add a little bit of context on this ending fund balance, because I understand that, you know, there's questions about, you know, how large it is and what does this mean, and how did we get to this point, and are we over-budgeting perhaps? Not necessarily. As you've seen in the slide that I shared a couple of slides ago on the FICMAT finding, FICMAT was brought into the district a few years ago when it was discovered the district was deficit spending and possibly at risk of fiscal insolvency. And that report did show that the district was on a trend, if their expenses were not reduced, was on a trend to possibly leading to a state loan, and therefore, the district had to reverse course and immediately put into place some steps in order to control those expenses or try to minimize or reduce them where possible. And it's very difficult in a district our size when 90% of our budget is salaries and benefits. You can't just quickly, you know, reduce 20% without impacting salaries and benefits. And the district did as much as it could in terms of the other categories that are not salaries and benefits, and we've shared that slide in the past, that, you know, the district reduced in the last three, four years about $60 million in expenses. A chunk of that was one-time, but a pretty big piece of that was ongoing, but it still wasn't enough to close that deficit. So prior to COVID, the district was still on this path, as you might recall, of deficit spending, you know, to a great magnitude. And in order to support that deficit or that shortfall, the district had to hold on to these reserves in order to make payroll, in order to have cash. We were at risk of running out of cash, as you might recall, just two years ago. And so what ended up happening is that, you know, that reserve that we started with in 1920 was about $85 million beginning fund balance, and it was there for that purpose, as Jesse shared in an earlier slide. That represents just two months of payroll. So in the event that the district did run out of cash or had to get a loan, at least we had something on hand to be able to keep operations going. However, you know, COVID hit. It changed our story a little bit. We did not spend as much as we thought we were going to spend, and we were able to recover some savings from that. And, you know, and it wasn't for, you know, a good reason. Unfortunately, we had to close schools and students weren't able to come in. Operating costs went down. We did not fill vacancies because it worked, we didn't have population of students to serve. And we've been recovering some of these savings for the last two years to the tune of about maybe $20 million or so. And so that has added to this ending fund balance. So it hasn't been because, you know, the district has not been budgeting appropriately, as Jesse shared. This budget adjustments reflects less than 1% of our projected budget, which is pretty good budgeting. And it's been very difficult, especially under a COVID environment, not knowing what, you know, the future, next few months are going to look like. Are we going to be able to open back to full capacity and experience operational costs that we were, you know, planning to or projecting to? It has been a little bit of a guess for us as well, but we're getting closer to that. So just wanted to add a little bit of context on that ending fund balance. And then also, this ending fund balance includes our restricted side, which is about $6 million of restricted funds that we, you know, we can't touch there for a specific purpose. And where it gets a little bit tricky is that on the unrestricted side, as you all know, we also are holding some supplemental concentration funds that are carryover from the prior year, and there also are increase in our concentration plus dollars that are now kind of restricted, but they're not, you know, in the restricted side, they're still in the unrestricted, but now they have to be tied to a specific activity. So because we have not yet gotten to that point, we cannot just, you know, allocate those dollars and spend them. We have to reserve them and continue, as Allah says now, and we have to continue to carry them over until there is a plan in place to spend those dollars down. And so more information will come on that once, you know, you start getting information on the LCAP and you start to catch up to all those plans. So lots of information there, but I just wanted to kind of explain a little bit about, you know, this ending fund balance and how we got to this point of it being as large as it is. And then the other thing is that, you know, this allowed us to make our 5% reserve, our 2% required, and then the boards approved 3%. and then the boards approved three percent of the board policy back in February. So that includes that as well. And then, so next slide, please. So opportunities, of course, are that, you know, the state budget continues to improve and we are hearing lots of information out there, possibly even another ADA funding model, which will be beneficial to the district and that our enrollment at least stabilizes, if not recovers. And that, you know, we are able, because of these situations, to achieve fiscal stability and have a balanced budget. And so the next information that we'll provide for you all will be, once the May revise comes out, we'll update our budget projections, of course, with whatever information is within that, that may revise. Next slide, please. And so again, just as a repeat, that we are submitting this with a qualified certification for the reasons stated. Next slide, please. And in summary, as we shared earlier, we've implemented more than fifty million in ongoing reductions and about twelve million in one time. The board has approved a couple of fiscal recovery plans in this last year, one in February for four and a half million and then one in December, five million in one time and two hundred and forty ongoing. And yet, we still need about six point two million dollars based on these projections in our third year to achieve a balanced budget and fiscal solvency. So our next official reporting period will be after the interim, which we will present to you in May. And that concludes the second interim report. If there are any questions.
Thank you, Chief Ramos. We do have a public comment.
Yes, we have two public comments. The first is from Daniel Darby.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Darby.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Let's see. Ms. Ramos seems to be playing a little bit of revisionist history here. If we go back to slide four, when we started talking about why our budget was conditionally approved by a COE, I remember that meeting was last June and the reason given was because the budgeting was so poorly done and so off so many years that they just couldn't trust the numbers, not that there is a structural budget deficit. And then if I go to slide twelve, I also mentioned to you last June that the eight percent increase for health benefits on slide twelve and on a couple of other slides, I believe, that has not occurred in this school district for years now. Prior to COVID, there has not been an eight percent increase. So I don't know where they're plucking this eight percent increase number from, but it seems to be just a wild guess that the prior history data does not support whatsoever. So I just wonder what other projections that they're making are poor. And if I think about it, when was the last time this district actually had a deficit? And I cannot remember. So we're probably going back a good five, ten years since this district actually had a deficit. We might have projected a deficit, but it never resulted in a deficit. So I find this very concerning. But I'm glad to hear that we're only projecting a deficit of six point two million in the third year because we've seen swings in the budget of up to ninety million dollars in the past. I think this year's budget swing from when we were our first budget to the current one, I think it's only like closer to twenty million.
Thank you. It's been two minutes.
Third year, six million.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. That's two minutes. Thank you. Next speaker?
We have two additional speakers and the next speaker is Taylor Kayata.
Go ahead, Mr. Kayata.
Thank you. So I'm really hoping that when the board speaks at this night, either now or I think you're still having a meeting later tonight, you can address, really, what are your plans for addressing this? Because it seems like you're looking at the worst-case scenario and you're bargaining down in what you can do to address it. Terrence Gladney earlier tonight had a really good analogy about, I think it was the Firebird. I would give an analogy of a car, right? Or I'm sorry, of a house. Let's say I have, you know, I know my air conditioning is going out, right? But I just got a twenty thousand dollar bonus at work. Maybe I'm going to spend that on a new AC. If I hadn't got that bonus, maybe I'm going to work at like, you know, keeping my costs up to seventy-eight, my heating. It seems like the district is deciding to ignore the fact that there are positives right now. Even as Rose Ramos mentioned, we have some benefits coming to us. What are we going to do to try to fix the long term by addressing the short term? We don't need to have long time, you know, we don't need to agree to something that's going to affect us in the future. We can make short-term investments now that will stop the decline of student enrollment, that will make our district more attractive to parents and to teachers. I would just ask that you please, you know, address that. I think the community really wants to hear. What do you actually want to do about this long-term budget? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker and final speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Terrence, go right ahead.
Good evening again. Back to my previous point. Well, I understand, you know, the necessary requirements to propose, you know, the interims and the budgets, you know, in their entirety. I would question, you know, is this budget and is this document and is this presentation student-centered? Could board members then take this and then properly articulate the information within it to her fellow classmates? Could we take this to a school site and articulate it to parents or is it far above their heads? Is it something that you guys even understand if you get it, you know, within the days before the budget? Do you, before the meeting, or do you have to step away and take some additional time to digest it? You know, through all my years in parent engagement, I know that the most important thing for parents is to see themselves in the programming at a school site. I would ask, where can parents see themselves or their students in this document? You know, is there a high-level statement that says these supplemental and concentration dollars come from these students? An average student in this population represents this amount of dollars to the district. We're talking about declining enrollment. What pockets of our population are those enrollments in? We chase specific students because we fear that they may flee the district, but they proportionally don't generate the most dollars and then we tend to neglect the ones that uplift our district. I don't see anywhere in here where the trends existing of student disenrollment. We know this at neighborhood schools because we continue to neglect them, but we continue to uplift and add additional buildings and supports for schools that are bursting at the seams. A school like West Campus, which was built and designed as a middle school, but because people didn't want to attend another high school, we're retrofitting a middle school, adding a track, adding facilities that a normal high school would have. We uplift and subsidize specialized programs that weren't designed to have all of the supports and services of a comprehensive high school. So until we see that reflected, whether as an addendum or an additional presentation that accompanies this, how do we really know what we're trying to fix? If my car is broken, I could guess it's the tires.
Thank you. It's been two minutes.
I could guess it's the engine until I check something, right?
Thank you, Terrence. Two minutes.
Check the treads. I really don't know. And that's what I feel like we're doing year after year. We're looking and just saying, hey, the budget's broken.
Thank you, Terrence.
Let's go up at the wall and see what sticks.
Thank you, Terrence. No additional speakers? Okay, perfect. I'll open it up for board discussion. No board discussion? Okay, we're gonna, Member Morowski? Member?
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Well, a lot of still very positive news in this budget, so thank you for that. I wanted to ask a couple of questions and also just point out to my, to my board members or even community members who are interested in, in looking at our budget. One section of the budget that's very interesting and gives you a lot of the assumptions is the criteria and standards. And that basically, it's pretty clear. It has a lot of the data that, the assumptions that build our budget. So in the enrollment, on the enrollment page, which is page five of one forty in my packet, I just wanted to point out the numbers of enrollment. You know, it's pretty, it's pretty dramatic going from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. So I was just hoping, and it's changed quite a bit since the, since the first interim. So I was hoping just to get a little bit more information about, you know, what we know about enrollment now and how that's, and how that's playing out.
Yes, good question, Member Morowski. We know that our CEDAT report was completed and based on that information that's completed in the fall and the updates that happened in January, then the firm that we have working with us to take a deeper dive on any Princeton enrollment projections and they consider, you know, various external factors as well. They use that as a, as kind of a benchmark to start to project out and see and determine what the future enrollment would possibly look like. And so they do apply a percentage based on this trend that we're moving along. But from that, we also internally, the district, we know that there are some things that are unique to our district, just like all districts. We know that there are some of our schools that are not, they're kind of, I would say, they're spared from that enrollment decline because there's a high demand for those programs at those schools. So we go back and we further adjust that decline at some of those sites. In addition to that, we also have a pre-registration process that we go through in the fall that our company that we work with, Decision Insight, they don't have that information because it's not available at the time that they are preparing for projections. So we start to wrap up that data right around in January and so we add that back in. And so in our enrollment projections that we have back here behind the scenes, we have all those details spelled out for each and every school site by grade level with an explanation of why, you know, it might vary compared to Decision Insight. And so why are we projecting the big decline is because we have been trending that and we thought that we were going to reverse course once we started school. We knew that we were starting the year with sixteen hundred less students. But as the fall progressed, we did not see those students come back. And that's what would have reversed that trend and possibly given us, you know, the confidence to go back a less of a decline for the coming year. And so at first interim, we were still planning that our decline for the future was going to be right around a half a percent, what we were projecting in the prior years prior to COVID. But once the CEDAT was done, once the CEDAT went in and did their numbers, it didn't show that we were going to trend that positively anymore. So that's why we see that big adjustment.
Okay. Well, it sounds like, you know, the further we get along, the more confidence we have in, in those numbers. So that's unfortunate. I would just like to, and I don't think this is in the fiscal shops portfolio, but just in terms of superintendent, what we can try to do, anything proactively to, to increase enrollment to, you know, I would like to see us, you know, talk about, like maybe bring back a plan or some, some kind of communication strategy to where we can, I don't know what has been assessed and we haven't had really the, the resources to put into something like that. But I think in, in keeping with some of the comments made tonight too, we do have one-time resources. So to the extent we can leverage any of those one-time resources to, to try to build up those numbers. I know we, you know, we are expanding PK and that's really positive. But it's still, it's still a really dramatic decline and, you know, I think it's just all for the best when we can build up our system. So I would just like to see, you know, we can talk, talk afterwards about, about what that looks like. But I would like to see some more proactive planning go into, you know, what can we, what can we actually do to increase enrollment? I guess one other thing that I just wanted to point out, because I, I know this has been a hot topic of conversation lately, but just in looking at, you know, page eight, for instance, salaries and benefits. So the, like the twenty nineteen, twenty year, and these are, these are unaudited actials in our unrestricted, which is our, basically our flexible funding pot. Ninety-three point five percent of our dollars based on actials in our unrestricted are going to salaries and benefits. So I just say that to emphasize that, you know, we, we are investing very heavily in, in salaries and benefits for, for our staff. So I just wanted, wanted just to point that out because these are the, these are the actual numbers that are in our budget. So, thank you. And just one other thing on, you know, on just the, the sense of one-time, one-time expenditures and we do have a significant reserve at this point because of the things that have happened, because we've been very fiscally prudent, mostly because of the COVID, you know, savings that was unplanned. So I do think we need to think more about, you know, what, what types of one-term, one-time investments make sense to, with, with the one-time resources we have. Because this board has agreed not to spend one-time resources on ongoing expenses. But it does seem like, you know, we're in a, in a space where we do have some of this one-time revenue and to the extent we have other needs that are not appropriate for the COVID relief dollars. You know, I think we should, we should look at what are those, what are those priorities? And one thing that I'll just throw out there because it sticks in my head is that we have not updated our history and social science curriculum in our district for a number of years. And, and this, I think, is, is a very big priority just on a, on a programmatic basis, on an equity basis, on, you know, just something that is more up to date and recognizes the diversity and the things that are happening in our world right now. So that's just one, one kind of example of something that is a one-time expense that might make sense to, to look at. So I just think we, I would like to ask that we be strategic and, and, you know, bring back to the board some ideas about those one-time, one-time investments that, that will pay off for our students over the long term. Thanks so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Member Morowski. There's nothing I would like to see more than these one-time funds going in large to, directly to impact our students, for sure. I just have one question for you, Chief Ramos. Just out of curiosity, can you tell me what, what a full day of ADA, what, what that is for the district? Like how much, what do we get for a full day, one day of ADA?
One day, oh, that's, oh, I'm not, Jesse, would you happen to know that?
I'm sorry. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Fortunately, I don't have that figured out the thought in my head, but we can certainly work on that. Get back to you.
Yeah, if you could, because I, with the impending possible strike that will affect the budget as well, possibly. So I'd like to know that answer. Okay, Member Garcia?
Yeah, just one quick question. I think it's on page six of the presentation. So I'm just wondering how these two are interrelated. The unrestricted deficit spending is projected to be in, right there, six point two million. And I'm wondering our board policy to set aside an additional three percent in the reserve account? So that's up from two percent, right? That's the, the state requirement, two percent. If we were to set aside, I don't know, one percent above the two percent, what, what does that do to the six point two million?
But your, your, okay, this, your six point two is your deficit. So this is the difference between your revenue and your expenses. And then what, and then, then whatever you have left over, then we add that to our beginning fund balance, which is kind of like our reserves that we start off with. And then we have our net reserves. I hope I'm not confusing. Maybe if we go to a slide, I can share a little easier. If we can go to the next slide and I can, just a second, please. So your deficit is really above your ending fund balance. From your ending fund balance comes your reserves. So as long as you have enough reserves, you can increase it by another percent, if that makes sense. So it doesn't change your deficit, if that's what you're asking, any member Garcia?
If you reduce it, so I'm, I'm, I'm asking the opposite. So the, it's, so here you, you're, I guess you're budgeting for three percent above the minimum, right? For a total of five. So my question is, So my question is, if you just increase it by 3%, including the 2% minimum, does that impact the 6.1% or the 6.1 million?
No.
It does not? It's still at 6.1?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that's the only piece that's keeping us from submitting a positive budget to the county?
Well, not necessarily the only piece, and I'm not sure if our spolied partners are on the line. But the other piece is because we have, of course, we don't have a balanced budget, our negotiations are not settled, and because these projections, especially the revenue side, is based on, are based on the Governor's January proposal.
Oh.
Which is not yet a for-sure thing, 100%. And Terry, or Nick, if you guys are on the line, if there's something else you want to add to that, what would prevent us from filing a positive versus qualified? Sure, they are. Sorry.
Rose?
Oh, Terry, there you go.
No, I think that you, that you covered it. I think that there are still some significant tentative, you know, enrollment. We are just working on January with, that has some really significant assistance for the district, and we don't know what that's going to really look like. And yeah, there's still some deficit spending. But I think it's just some of the uncertainties, as you outlined. I think that's the main thing.
Okay. Superintendent, I would also be interested in seeing a plan on how we're going to increase enrollment moving forward. I know that years ago, I think when I first came to this board, you know, we are thinking of TK as one part of increasing student enrollment. But I'm also interested in hearing how we're going to grow certain programs. And I know it was, West Campus was mentioned. I know that the physical location of West Campus is pretty tight, and it accommodates about, what, like, 800 and something students? I don't know if there's room for growth. I know that, you know, even if, if, if there's room to grow over time to us, not, not to make it a big, big high school, but certainly an opportunity to find out how we can accommodate more students. Often, it is a school that if some students, you know, the whole, like, I guess, open enrollment process is a separate issue. But I do want us to think about how we increase capacity to retain some of our students, because they do leave the district in high school if certain programs are not available. So, so we just need to, I think, at the same time, strengthen all our programs. I want to make sure that that's clear. But, but I do want to see how we're going to, what's the plan? What's the plan to bring in more students and keep our students, especially at the high school level?
Members Garcia and Members Murawski, Members Garcia and Murawski, I do want to mention that, if you remember, as part of the fiscal recovery plan, particularly for our small specialized charter programs, we did task Mary Harding Young to work on a plan, even though we know that, or we knew that we had one-time funds. She has been working with our site principals, our communications department. And what I will do is I will ask that the team broaden their scope of how we might use a communication strategy, not just to figure out how we grow enrollment in those programs that were part of the fiscal recovery plan, but beyond that, because the strategy should be pretty similar. And we will report back to you here in the next few board meetings with a report on what we've been thinking about. Again, not just for those schools that have been identified as part of the fiscal recovery plan, beyond the one-time funds that are helping us during this period, but for for these other, just in general, for all of our school district.
Thank you, Member Garcia. And, and not to mention, I think, you know, you had also mentioned the growth of TK. And I just also want to mention the parent participation preschool that will also help us grow our ADA and keep our own students within our district. That would help tremendously with that as well. All right, this is an informational item. Right now, we are going to bring this back and right after all of this in, with special board meeting. So then, then we'll vote on it due to a clerical mishap. So, item 8.4, resolution number 3260, a resolution of the Board of Education of the Sacramento City Unified School District, Sacramento County, California, authorizing the issuance of Sacramento City Unified School District General Obligation Bonds, election of the 2020, Measure H, 2022, Series A, and actions related to thereto to be issued by the Sacramento, by the County of Sacramento on behalf of the Sacramento City Unified School District. Chifremos?
Yes, thank you.
We're actually talking about measure eight.
The presentation to Del Star, he's our municipal advisor for our bonds. And there's a few other speakers that are going to speak on these items as well. And with that, yeah.
Sure. Good evening. There are actually four resolutions before you tonight. These are information items only. They are not for action. They'll be coming back to your subsequent meeting. I'm going to get a very, very brief overview with me tonight, if we can go to the next slide, please. With me tonight is Carlos Wilo Fuerte of Stradling Yaca. And also, I believe Meredith is not with us, but she has a colleague that may be coming in regarding the Citizens Oversight Committee. And again, I'm going to give a brief overview. As we go through these resolutions, there may be questions for legal counsel. If we can go to the next slide, please. Our job is to, again, this has to do with the general obligation bonds that have been approved by voters. Our job is to keep an eye on those tax rates. There have been four measures, I'm sorry, five measures, including the one passed in 2020 by the voters. Those bonds, many of them are still outstanding. This is our estimate of what taxpayers in your district are paying per $100,000 of assessed valuation. That includes homeowners, agricultural property, industrial property, commercial property, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, the estimated tax rate is about in the $90 per $100,000 range. As you can see, that is falling over time. In 2020, voters in this district approved Measure H, a $750 million general obligation bond. And none of those bonds have been issued. And as such, none of the taxpayers are paying any money on that. However, the first series is now coming before you for approval to bring to investors to provide additional funding for the district. Next slide, please. That first issuance, which will be, the dollar amount is still being tinkered with, it shows here, $215 million. It may come back at a little bit higher or a little bit lower for final approval. That first measure will provide tax rates that will go up to the rate that was disclosed to voters in 2020 of an additional $50 per $100,000. And then you can see, we've made room for the remaining bonds in the future as they'll go in. Again, these rates are going to continue to fall down over time, but there will be an increase because of this first issuance of Measure H. In addition, if I can go to the next slide, the district has numerous financings outstanding. This is a full listing of them. There are certain dates and hurdles at which we can go and we can come to you and find if there are, is an ability to refinance those outstanding issues to provide additional taxpayer savings. There is one, and the most important column in this somewhat dense table is on the over, on the right-hand side, the call date. That means the date at which we can refinance. You can see, highlighted in yellow, is a financing that was done in 2012. We can refinance that now. There will be other issues down the road that can provide additional taxpayer savings listed on this sheet. But if we can go to the next table, turn to the next page, please. You can see that that refinancing that I just described, highlighted in yellow, will produce approximately $8 million in taxpayer savings. Not an enormous amount, but enough to pick up and provide additional savings as we go forward. Again, that is one of the separate resolutions that's being put in front of you for consideration, for information tonight, and consideration at a future meeting. In addition, we have two other resolutions in front of you. One is to certify the election results, which is necessary before you can proceed with the financing, and also to create a new tax independent citizens oversight committee to review the expenditures of these funds. One last slide, please. Assuming all of the resolutions are approved by you at the, at the subsequent board meeting, we anticipate this being completed by mid-June of this year. That is the end of this very short presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The presentation can be brought down if you'd like. And as I said, we have legal counsel available should there be any questions. I know you have to take these in order, and so I'm happy to direct that traffic if necessary.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment?
No, there's no public comment on, on these items.
Okay, great. Thank you. I am excited that we're, we're talking about Measure H. There's members on this board that worked very hard on this measure, being one of the largest bonds that we passed in Sac City right during the middle of a pandemic. Pretty amazing. And so this is an informational item, and you'll be bringing this back, you said, in June, or?
No, we'll bring this back at your next meeting.
April 7. April 7, I understand.
Completed in June, assuming you pass these resolutions at your next meeting.
The only question I have is, how does our, I don't know, I may not be using the correct terminology, but our credit score for the district affect the sale of these bonds?
It's called a credit rating.
Credit rating, thank you.
And the credit rating affects the interest rate. Your credit rating is, I would not call it strong, but it is average for a district of your size, and especially given the recent financial problems that you've had. It's something we will be looking at as we go forward with this transaction and meeting with the rating agencies to determine what that final rating will be for these transactions.
Great. I'm looking forward to seeing what the turnout is. Member Garcia?
Yeah, just a quick question on the refi piece. What does that mean in terms of the savings? What, what is, do those savings go somewhere, or?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Those savings will go directly to reductions in the tax rate as paid by the taxpayers of the district. The funds will, the savings do not go to the district. They go back to taxpayers in the form of reduced tax rates.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'm assuming this incorporated resolution number 3260, 3261, and 3262, is that correct?
If you just wrote all four, yes.
Okay, and incorporated all four. Okay, perfect. We will see you back on April 4. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item 9.0, Communications Employee Organization Reports, SCTA?
No report.
No report? Okay. Item 10.0, Public Hearing, 10.1, Grades K-5 Science Instructional Materials Adoption.
Excuse me, President Pritchett. Excuse me, Nikki Molesky has raised her hand to report for SCTA.
Okay, going back to 9.1, then, SCTA. Go right ahead, Nikki.
Good evening, members of the board. It really bothers educators and staff that you say to the public that you want to emphasize your concern for students who will lose class time if there is a strike. But you seem to have zero concern for the 10,000 students that every day do not have a permanent teacher. That is the chaos that is going on right now. That is the horrible things that are happening for our students. That is what teachers and SCIU staff members are fighting for and trying to get you to do the right thing, to work with us to ensure that we can have teachers and classified staff for our students. Our students deserve. They need a teacher in their classroom. Our students need instructional aides and bus drivers and school nurses and nutrition service workers. Our students do not need more overpaid administrators here at the CERNET, which you have added with COVID money, over 30 new administrator positions at the CERNET Center. Speaking of money, let's talk about budget for a minute. We don't have a budget problem. We have a priorities problem. With $320 million in COVID funds and an unrestricted reserve fund of $125 million and the highest aid funding in K-12 education, SCUSD is in the best financial position it has ever been in its history. Any reasonable person can see that now is the time for the district to finally do something about a staffing crisis. And as it turns out, the Neutral Fact Finder agrees. He wrote in his report, "It is counterintuitive to expect that proposals to shift healthcare costs to employees or to freeze wages for several years would help any employer recruit and retain staff." And that's also why the Neutral Fact Finder recommended that the district provide an immediate cost of living increase retro to July 1 of 2021. And that's the same as what the superintendent's new contract gets, based on the Consumer Price Index. By the way, the district requested impasse. The district wanted a neutral fact-finding report. And now you are rejecting that very same report from the Neutral Fact Finder. This report that the superintendent previously claimed was so vital to this process. In contrast, from the outset, we have said that this fight is about ensuring that every student has a teacher in their classroom. And that's why our bargaining team has unanimously agreed to support the recommendations of the Fact Finders. However, if the district does not bargain in good faith to reach an agreement based on our, on the recommendation, we have set a strike date for Wednesday, March 23. We hope we don't have to, and we are available 24/7 to meet with the district between now and the 23. But we are prepared, if necessary, to strike for our students on Wednesday. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. It is also my understanding that we used COVID dollars to hire SCTA employees. Correct? Yes. Okay. Got to make sure I'm correct there. 10.0, Public Hearing, 10.1, Grades K-5 Science Instructional Materials Adoption? Aaron Hansen and Matt Coleman?
Thank you, President Pritchett, and good evening, board members and superintendent. I'm here this evening to introduce our science coordinator, Matt Coleman, who has led our K-5 Science Instructional Materials Pilot and Adoption Process. And this evening, he is going to be sharing with you how that process worked and what the outcome is and what our recommendation is as far as our science instructional materials adoption is concerned for this year. So with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Coleman.
Thanks so much for that introduction, Aaron. I really appreciate it. And thank you to the board members for being here tonight. I recognize it's late, and there's lots of pressing matters that we tend to. The goal of this project, to pilot and adopt science curriculum for the K-5, is to ensure that all of our youngest learners are finally getting standard-aligned materials, including social-emotional learning and resources to meet the diverse and culturally responsive needs of our teachers and students. And so to get into this, in 2016, state for adopting a California framework which guides curriculum and instruction to support LEAs, or local education agencies, in implementing improved standards instructional. We reviewed, so the state reviewed instructional materials and gave us a list of those approved materials. And using our guiding principle of equity and social justice, we looked at that lens as we screened materials as we got into our pilot process. And so we engage in this instructional materials adoption from starting last year in May, and we just wrapped up just, just past month. Next slide, please. So there are, there were three main components to our materials adoption process. The first included a prescreen of the state-approved materials, and that was led by about 15 reviewers, grades K-5. We met in the spring of last year, and we narrowed that program list down from nine to five. Then we took those five programs and we screened them really deeply in what we call a paper screen. Then we took those five programs and we screened them really deeply in what we call a paper screen. And so twelve reviewers, these are teachers, met for six hours a day and deeply screened these curriculum, and then chose two to move on to our pilot for this year, and those were Amplify and Carolina. This process was guided by the two thousand eighteen California Angus's Toolkit for Instructional Material Evaluation. We'll call that the time process tonight. And yeah, let's go to the next slide. So this is what our pilot committee looked like. We had a large group of teachers ranging from kindergarten to fifth grade. What they did is they did two eight-week pilots. So they piloted Carolina for eight weeks, and then they piloted Amplify for eight weeks. And we we looked at analysis of student work and teacher feedback and community feedback, and all that went into our collaborative analysis of materials using standardized rubrics. Next slide, please. In addition to the pilot teachers going through this really intensive process, we also did some outreach to our community to look at both of these programs and provide some feedback. So we used e-connect and social media. We posted fires to the bulletin board. We shared with teachers so that community could respond and look at both programs and independently evaluate it. And so after, we go to the next slide. So after all of the pilot process over the last few months and including community feedback and lots of other feedback and data, really, our team decided to come to consensus to recommend Amplify Science through K five for adoption. Next slide, please. As far as the budget and financial consideration for this, this is coming out of our general fund. We had approximately five million dollars secured for the adoption. We spent approximately a hundred thousand of that doing our screening over the last year and our pilot process. The remaining budget will be used for purchasing the materials and professional learning as we implement over the next few years. And so our next slide shows some of our decision data that was made from our pilot committee and our community feedback. So of the thirty-two teachers that were present at our consensus meeting, twenty-nine of them, or over ninety percent of them, indicated that they either strongly agreed or supported this program. And as far as community feedback, twelve of the fifteen community members that provided feedback also agreed that they strongly agreed or supported this program, eighty percent. So here's just some of the highlights that was brought to the attention from our pilot members. So Amplify has a really strong storyline. The lessons are connected, the rigor builds upon each other. So students are progressively learning as they're going, and they're really the sense makers. Really engaging simulations that are built into the platform. So instead of having to go to outside programs to use simulations, they're designed and built right in the program that students and teachers have access to. It's built in a cyclical way in which there's multiple attempts for students to share and show their learning in lots of modalities. So that was really a huge highlight for Amplify. Embedded differentiation. So right inside of the program, there's differentiation embedded for all different types of learners. Accelerated English language learners, English ELD, so just lots of differentiation really built in there. We actually had our ELD team, our tech team, and our specialized team look at this program also independently, and and they were all able to notify or notice those specific embedded differentiations. Really strong support resources for teachers. And like I said, to have that built-in simulation, and students are also able to respond using the online platform. So just incorporating twenty-first century skills. And then there's strong concept connections. So again, built into the platform are the connections to all of our common courses. And they had built-in Google Slides that are already prepared for teachers. That makes it really easy for facilitation. So just some of the highlights. And I want to get into our next steps, our last slide here. The next step of the of the process is really to be here tonight first. And then to work with our library, technical services, and Amplify, our publisher, to purchase materials so that we're we're making sure that all of our students, teachers actually have materials before next year. That way, when we get into our implementation plan and can start training teachers, they're ready to go. And on that note, so providing professional learning for leaders and teachers to build their capacity and effectively utilize the materials that we're going to adopt. Next step would be to create some curriculum maps for teachers to outline expectations and some placement guides for them. And then finally, to assess the curriculum, embedded assessments for recommendations for use in the classroom and for district-wide assessments. And that really concludes just the presentation portion of this.
Great. Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have one public comment from Terrence Gladney.
Hi, Terrence. Go right ahead.
Good evening, guys. I'm wondering, you know, if we're talking around, you know, equity and and social justice. I didn't see representation reflected in the presentation. I did see a reference to storylines, but I didn't see that, whether through the storylines or the curriculum itself, that there's representation of diverse populations that would reflect our student enrollment within the district. So I think there would be a great opportunity to reference the contributions of all populations and really undo the sort of one-sided history or the one-sided curriculum that students have had to endure for generations. So I don't know if the presenter could speak on that specifically, or if that will fall on the hands of school sites and teachers to implement that. And if that's the case, then I would hope that we have a plan that, again, would include families, educational partners, and obviously the people at the school sites will be doing the actual lifting of this new curriculum.
Yeah, I don't mind responding there. Thank you for that comment. The curriculum does have embedded supports for like culturally relevant learning, and and part of that in the science standards is to is to basically use what's culturally relevant around you and then modify the phenomenon that students are working at. So that is culturally relevant for them. And I totally agree with you. We need to change that culture, and I'm prepared to to lead that way, for sure. So I I hundred percent agree with you. Thank you for the comment.
Great, thank you. Do we have any board comments? All right, this is an action. Oh, yep, go ahead, Member Garcia.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get some clarity on the professional learning. Is that is that professional learning that is already, I guess, part of the the built-in professional learning days for our teachers? I just, I want to understand, because this is a district-wide implementation, right? So just just trying to process that, like when it's happening before two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
Would you like me to take that, Matt?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, by all means, go ahead and.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Garcia, for that question. So part of what we are doing in the CNI department right now is is building out what a year-long professional learning plan looks like and how we incorporate all of the subject matter competencies that we need to, including building our K five and six through twelve facility with the new curriculum, because as you'll remember, we just recently adopted six through twelve science curriculum as well. And so building in all of the subject matter elements as well as those together through the lens of MTSS and UDL, our anti-bias, anti-racist work. And to Terrence's point around the culturally relevant and responsive teaching and learning strategies that we know are really important to our student population. And so it will be integrated. We also know that with new curriculum adoption, we do need to do some standalone work in order to ensure that our teachers are ready to be able to use this in the in the new school year. Matt, do you want to add anything to that?
Nope, I think you hit all the points I was going to make. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. That that's very helpful. Great, thank you. This is an action.
President Pritchett, may I say one quick thing before you vote?
Of course, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to quickly recognize the efforts of our science coordinator, Matt Coleman, who's here today for his efforts around this adoption and pilot process. It's, you know, he can speak to it in a very short period of time, but it has been an incredible amount of work to get us to this point and really working through all of the diverse perspectives that he brought into the pilot program and getting them to the point where there was a consensus was a pretty masterful job of of leading our our educators. And I also want to just say thank you to our science training specialists, as well as all of the teachers who participated in this pilot. Because in addition to teaching everything that they were doing, that we expect them to do during the day, they were also learning new curriculum and did it twice and used this with our students, collected data, spent their evenings working with the pilot program to really ensure that the curriculum that we're adopting really does truly meet the needs of our students and our community. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who was involved in this, and we're really excited to be able to bring the science curriculum to our students in the fall.
Fantastic. Thank you. Member Marowski?
Thank you. Ms. Hanson said everything I was going to say. And I just wanted to say I'm really excited. Thank you for your for your strong work and to all the all the teachers and all staff throughout the district who participated.
Great. I'm excited to get to a vote on this. All right, I will take a motion. Second. All right, a student preferential vote. All right, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, Superintendent.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Marowski?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Phillips? Member Wu?
All right, fantastic. Great job, guys. We're looking forward to it. All right, item eleven point O, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion? Oh, we have a public comment on consent? Okay, so we have public comment on consent. Item eleven point one H.
The person requesting is no longer online.
Oh, okay, so we have no public comment on consent. Okay, all right, I get a motion for consent. Second, student preferential vote. All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Marowski?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Phillips? Member Wu?
Perfect. Item twelve point O, Business and Financial Information Reports Received. Do we have any public comment on that? Okay, item thirteen point O, Future Board Meeting Dates, April seventh and April twenty-first. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can start our special meeting? All right, can I get a second? Student preferential vote. All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, that meeting is adjourned.